Tell them everything we've been trying to commit to it.
Okay, call to order, please. Thank you. Um, six o'clock. Going to call to order, I'm not ready. Um, could we have a roll call, please?
Pankins?
Here.
Bowers Socks?
Here.
Sires?
Here.
Olfest?
Here.
Okay, um, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
My second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's approved. Public comments, are there any comments from the audience of anything that's not on the agenda? Go to item five now. Approval of the P and Z Commission Meeting Minutes for July 18th, 2022.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, just for everybody's information, we're short three people tonight, but we do have forum, so we can act, if correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And we, we have one, maybe two, uh, that are on Jenny's computer.
They haven't joined yet, but I'm watching for them.
Okay, all right. Um, we'll go ahead and proceed because we do have a forum. Item six, recommend council approve the site plan for Home State Bank with amendments. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on their app? State your name and where you're from. Company if you represent it.
Uh, Trent Smith, McClure Engineering Company, address is 1360 Northwest 101st Street, Live, Iowa. Good to see you guys again about this project, we're excited that it's back online. Uh, this may look pretty familiar to you as, uh, we've previously presented this a few months ago. Um, just so everyone's on the same page, I don't know how close a look you took at the site plan, it's very similar. Um, the reason it's back online is we made some changes to the building. The building changes, uh, to the footprint were so minimal that the site is essentially the same as what you guys approved previously. With the amendments, which was adding the pedestrian, uh, trail on Third Street. Really, the only change to the site plan was a shift to the, uh, accessible stalls in the front of the building, just moved over one or two stalls to the right. Uh, the reason behind that was just to accommodate some natural grading, uh, with ramps and the requirements. Anything else is pretty much the same. The building, there's, uh, we have representatives from J Corp and Home State Bank here today to speak about the building, if you have any questions, but I can field any questions about the site.
Okay. Questions from the commission?
I just wanted to say thanks for, uh, working with us on that access or, uh, bike, uh, pedestrian access off the back.
Sounds good.
I think that helps us achieve, uh, some of our goals as a city.
Agreed.
Um, if I remember right, the monument wasn't shown before because it had a possibility, is that correct?
Correct.
And can you show me where the monument would go when you do add it?
Yeah, it's pretty speculative, but there's a place on the nor, or the southwest corner, uh, that would accommodate, uh, monument signage.
Is that on the street, the two street corner?
Yep. Great.
And how big can the monument be? I'm concerned about sightlines when somebody pulls up.
Sure.
At the stoplight. See?
Just, you know, they, the city has an ordinance, uh, regarding vision triangle, so they can't be within that 25 vision triangle.
Okay.
So that's an automatic setback on all intersections.
The workup.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Forward.
Okay. Now with that, uh, request, uh, a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion that we recommend the council approval of the site plan for the Home State Bank, uh, with amendments, uh, subject to staff and engineers' comments dated August 9th, uh, 2022.
Second.
Okay, um, have a motion in a second. Uh, could have a roll call, please.
Bowers Socks?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Olfest?
Yes.
Pankins?
Yes.
Okay, um, you can go if you want, you don't need to stay.
Definitely.
Thank you, Brad.
Yeah, thank you very much. Move on to item number seven, uh, recommend council approve the plat, survey for Camp property. Is there anybody here that would like to speak, would you come up to the podium?
Oh, I just, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay. Um, please, please state your name.
Oh, Ron Camps, I'm the owner.
And what's your address, please?
Uh, my address is 3028 Avenue Slater, not Slater.
Thank you.
My own, uh, problem. I do have a couple of questions on this plot, you know, it does state that, uh, and, and you'll have to forgive me, this is way over my head, but after this parcel is sectioned off, um, can that be broken up for another residence in time?
Okay, we'll defer to Kathleen.
It, it can, but you would have to go through a plat of subdivision, so you can't do another plat of survey.
Explain that a little bit more.
Um, it's just a more detailed process where, um, depends on what the subdivision, if it's one lot or two lots, or, you know, exactly what it is you're doing, I mean, if you were doing hundred lots on it, you know, you'd look at it different than if it was one, but you do have to do a plat of subdivision.
Okay.
So it's just a few more steps, gives a little bit more detailed review in terms of, of, you know, does it need to have a public street, you know, that, that kind of thing?
Okay.
Do you have water, do you have sewer? We look at it a little bit more in depth than just a plat of survey.
Okay.
And that's required anytime, you know, you're allowed one, one lot split, but anytime you go past the one lot split, you have to do a classification.
One lot on 48?
Right. On, yeah. And technically, the city can require a plat of survey even for the one lot, but they've historically not done that for the extraterritorial area.
It's not the city, right?
Right, right. Yeah, although because it's in our, the city's two mile jurisdiction, they are required to review it as if it were in the city.
Okay. Okay. So, so let's take the, uh, the property owner, if it was to be developed or anything, the property owner wants to kind of distance themselves from the division or from the, uh, development, that would be all right? You understand?
I'm not sure.
They want more, they're gonna want more, they would want more property?
Oh, if this, oh, you mean if you wanted to subdivide and add to this?
Well, yeah.
I mean, I mean.
Yeah, yeah, well, things are.
So in other words, if this is like just for the mortgage purposes?
This is for the mortgage purposes right now.
Yeah.
And in time.
If you're not adding another, if, if, we could probably do a plat of survey if it was tied, do they have what they call a record of lot tie agreement, where it would be tying it together to make it one larger parcel, and then we could probably.
Okay.
Go around that requirement, if you're, if you're not creating another buildable lot, which if you're just adding, making this lot larger and you're not, you know, adding another house to it.
So if there was another lot to be built on?
Then we would look at it as a plat of subdivision, maybe minor plat of subdivision, again, we have to see what you're.
Okay, all right. That helps a lot, thank you very much.
Mission, comments?
Uh, wait, I do have one, is there something that I need to sign for this, where this is all, I, as I read on this, something about some, uh?
Yeah, you need to sign your check.
Some waiver, no. Some waivers?
There's a petition waiver.
So the sign off, I need to sign that?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, that's before it goes to council.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, commission, anybody? Do we have anybody online? No? All right, um, so I'll, uh, look for a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion that we recommend the council approval of the plat of survey for the Camp property, uh, subject to, uh, staff and engineers' comments dated August 9th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, um, roll call, please.
Olfest?
Yes.
Pankins?
Yes.
Bowers Socks?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Okay. Now we're gonna move on to item number eight. Okay, item number eight, I'm gonna recommend the council approval of preliminary plat for Hollywood's with amendments. We have somebody that's gonna speak, so that's good.
Good evening, Roger Silver with Nellis Associates, 1150 Southwest State Street, here with Dean and Holly Fork as well. I recall we were here months ago discussing this and, uh, I think two things that, um, one, one clarification on something that we've done regarding the trails, and then we want to talk about accessory structures. So, Catherine emailed me today and asked that I bring a copy of Antler Ridge, which is the subdivision plot going into the northwest. And so I would like to hand out a copy of Antler Ridge.
Sure.
And the primary purpose of this is to show you the location where we propose our trails.
Do you have enough copies for staff?
I do.
Otherwise, we can share. We can share.
It's really, uh, I just kind of showed the trail and park on the overall. So, to start out with, there was a comment previously that talked about, or requesting that we provide an agent so that they have to go on the north side of Hollywood's and we get to get, we're proposing a trail location east to west through Antler Ridge. This is just to show you the thing lines where we currently are proposing that trail on the north side of Townhome East, then, uh, meander through Antler Ridge and along the public street, side yards, and those lots will be restricted with no driveway access to minimize the work. Leading to the park that's centralized. So, we just wanted to provide that clarification, uh, as we are still proposing to not have requirement by, per se, Holly, because, like, things are privacy.
Has staff seen this?
Yes.
Okay. And we're okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've, we've gone back and forth a number of times, and I think we've got to a good place.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Just, just wanted to give you an opportunity to see it, and if you had any questions, answer those before we move into the accessory structure conversation.
All right, the, the red dash lines are those phases?
Actually, that, that's zoning boundary lines, so we've got some cleanup zoning to do, Antler Ridge.
Oh, okay.
Once we get through that process, or as part of the plating process, we'll have to clean up some zoning, because things have morphed as we are running usually. Okay, anyone else have any other questions on the trail location or anything?
We have some questions for Kathleen. I kind of got a little lost doing this.
Okay.
Because there's so much, so many comments here.
Oh.
There's five review comments, and, um, is this just pretty straightforward that you're just pointing out stuff, or can?
Realistically, there, there are comments that staff had made that the, the applicant wants to discuss with you all, so. They're most, they're, if you read through them, they're basically pertaining, the five outstanding comments are pertaining to accessory structures.
So we should go through these comments?
Yeah, and they.
Yeah, okay.
Your, your recommendation at the last meeting, uh, was for one, no more than one accessory structure, and I believe it was 4,000 square feet in size. Uh, now, they're requesting, uh, three accessory structures up to, I want to say 8,000 square foot total, with no single structure more than.
Forty five.
Forty five hundred, thank you.
So that, that takes into account number one, number two, is that?
Yeah, I, staff, we had recommended just.
And four and five.
Yeah, we had, staff had recommended just one accessory structure that was larger. Our, since the memo was put together, we find that there are two existing buildings that you're wanting to keep.
Yeah, so, let me, if I may, I'll, I'll kind of explain and then let Dean and Holly kind of stand upon that.
So it all kind of comes together, it's not?
Yeah.
That, that's what I was trying to.
So, Genevieve Lowesgau's house is located right, and, uh, our best estimation is that Dean and Holly would like to build their house. Like to build their house a little bit south with possibly an overlook to the existing home. So this is just to represent the approximate location where they're thinking they're, obviously Genevieve Lowesgau's house. There are also multiple of bins and accessory structures. There's a, a red barn that's up front of about 1,800, 15 to 1,800 square feet in size that they'd like to, considering. And then there's a shop there, I believe, is that correct, Dean? That's, that's the other existing building that to preserve, and in addition to that, they're considering this 4,500, which we talked about, that might include that indoor gym, that kind of thing, and whether that's, uh, separated, I'm not exactly sure, they're thinking where that's gonna be, but obviously fairly close to their home site. And so, a couple, that's why we were, instead of one 8,000 square foot, we were asked to preserve these two and then ability to, uh, to build this new, uh, and then, so, one of the other, uh, comments regarding the, um, front yard is that, obviously, if the house is over here, obviously have this one that would be ahead of the house, but still over 100 feet back from the property, and this shop would like, likely be in front of future homes. So that's why there was a couple of these items that we were not necessarily agreeing directly with Snyder's.
Yeah, again, we, at the time we wrote it, we didn't know you were trying to keep existing structures. I, I guess from my perspective, the existing structures would be grandfathered in, so what we were, what, the note would only apply to new structures, so.
Okay, well, there, there was a, I think at one point, we had a comment that said all other, all accessory structures would be removed as part of.
Yeah, see, again, so it was kind of been in flux, so that's why maybe our comments aren't, but with keeping it, as long as that building, I mean, like the one up front, you couldn't expand it, um, you know, you could maintain it, but not expand the structure, or, I guess the same would hold true with the shop building as well. So, then you kind of don't really get to, then you'd really only have one structure, one new structure, that'd be 4,500, plus the two existing, so I don't know if that adds up to 8,000 square.
Not quite?
No.
Right, you're at like 7,200?
Yeah.
Okay.
How big is the shop building roughly?
It's roughly 1,200.
Okay.
Roger, just a clarification on that, there was a note here about there might be two buildings there by the shop, is that all one? It's under the?
There's, I guess all, you know, Dean knows his property, and I do, and I'm, I'm kind of, I'm just kind of introducing, here's, here's what we talked about. But, yeah, once you kind of expand.
And there's eight buildings there, we're gonna tear down at least six at a moment in time, one that touches it, another one behind it, another one there, so, we're just keeping the, those are in great shape, or we'll re, repaint them or whatever, but they will be in front of the house. There's 21 acres too.
So there's three accessory buildings left on the site.
Well, buyers can keep two.
Yeah, so this, this would be the new.
And, and, and you build a new, so there's gonna be three accessory buildings. And the total square footage of those three would be 8,100.
1,800.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the wording could be easily be changed to reflect, you know, new accessory structure, so it'll be located in the front yard.
Sure.
You know, or, or an existing, you know, existing structure can't be expanded if it's in the front yard, you know. We can, I think we can make those adjustments to what, kind of get, our, our thought was that we didn't want a one large, an 8,000 square foot structure in the front yard, so.
If we attach it to the house, we, how does that work, you know, with sprinklers? Is it 8,000 square?
If it's attached, you'd have to, because it's the building code.
Or the firewall on that one? Does that get around if I sprinkle it?
Um, it depends on the size, but we can verify that for you tomorrow, the state building.
Okay.
Since I don't have the code book in front of me.
Okay, so, the five review comments that you had, um, if we accept this, this works for the city and works for the, is that correct?
Well, I guess, just to kind of run through how we would change it, we would, if we would amend the, the notes to reflect that there would be no new accessory structures in the front yards, and that existing structures would not be expanded if they're in, in the front yards. And that same comment would hold, hold true with the 35 foot setback, there'd be no new buildings within that 35 foot setback, and no existing buildings would be expanded to be closer, so it, it wouldn't impact the fact that you've got an existing structure that would technically be grandfathered in that. So, and we can work on that language, just to make sure that's saying that, but, um, and then, um, so that would take care of really one and, one, two and three, uh, and well, really in four, the only other thing was, um, the home occupation, which I think we've.
That was my misunderstanding, I was actually thinking that was talked about by your house and your home business, so once I understand, uh, you guys don't, essentially can't have more than 25% accessory structure, or any, any structure devoted to a home business.
Yeah, and that's code anyway, but it's just to clarify that.
Don't think that's an issue.
Yeah, so it's just, there's, I think you left off one word that we just will need to add back in the note when you, when you added it on, so we'll add that, make that correction to show that there are no more than, um, because I believe you left it off saying accessory structures instead of any structure, because it does include the principal too.
Now, if we don't attach it to the house, can we have a bathroom in that accessory structure? Yeah.
Oh, one last point of clarification on note four, where it says no accessory structure shall be permitted in the front yard of the lot.
Mm-hmm.
Defined as the yard extending across a full width of the lot, and that you need at least distance, you know.
Correct.
So, if this was the house, you're, you're essentially calling this.
Mm-hmm.
So, what they're saying is that this cannot be here.
Yeah.
It could be here or back, right? Are you guys okay with that?
Could be a big front door.
Well, right. I'm just saying that that's an awful lot of space that, that is not permitted to have. Just wanted you guys to understand that.
Yeah, I was just kind of initially dead set on having a close view and whatnot of the pond, but we've been out there walking it more than once, and I might be getting my mind swayed a little bit, so I'm okay, I think, with moving the house forward so that it can make. And I apologize, I didn't bring up, um, those two accessory buildings the last time I was in here, uh, I don't really place value on those building structures, but it does make sense that they're in good enough shape, it would kind of be a waste to take them out, so.
I do want to point out, as you're deciding where to put the house, our city code requires a driveway.
Yeah.
To the building, so the farther away from the road, you know, that concrete and that, adds the cost, so.
Yeah.
Just to make sure you knew that.
And the fire hydrant situation and proximity and all that too, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've kind of shown it where you, we thought the house was gonna be, but, um, it may be that you need to adjust the driveway a bit and, and fire hydrant a bit, so that you get your correct fire hydrant coverage.
Have we approved plat? And this is just an amendment?
This is a men, an amendment based strictly on those, those five comments, that are related to accessory structures, unless you have any other amendments.
So, they're going to need to make these changes?
Yeah, they'll need to make the changes before it goes to council, city.
Okay, all right, and so it goes back through you?
Yeah.
Okay, and not us?
No.
Okay, because we've already approved plat, just recommending amendments.
Well, you're reapproving it because, because they didn't follow your recommendation for the one building per 4,000.
Okay.
One building of 4,000 square foot max.
4,500 or 4,000?
Well, that's what it was originally.
That's 4,000.
It was 4,000 first, but, but now it'd be 4,500.
Okay.
One new accessory structure, 4,500, and then retaining the two existing at 1,800.
4,500 by 50.
Roger's getting chewy, round the arm.
All right, I, I could be wrong about this, but, because I can't do it. But somebody else up here might be able to, but although you did an excellent job explaining changes that, and the wording of this, it's pretty hard to say that all again. So unless somebody up here thinks they have a good handle on that, and can make that, include all that, then we're gonna need a little help.
I would be happy to make an attempt, and then, uh, perhaps call for that if someone would. How would that work?
Sucking you right into it. Thank you.
Are we ready for that?
Yeah, you're, you're really good at this, thank you.
So, uh, I would make a motion that we recommend the council of preliminary plat for Hollywood's, uh, with amendments, subject to staff and engineers' comments, uh, dated August 9th, 2022. Clarifying, however, uh, staff and engineer comments, uh, should be modified so that no new structure, uh, can be built over 20, uh, over 4,500 square feet. Uh, no, uh, additional new structures can be built in front of the house, no existing, or no expansion of the existing structures, uh, can, per, and clarification of the front yard setback.
Do we have demolition in there of six other things too?
I think that was in previous.
I'm just saying, is it?
Yeah, and, and demolition of, uh, all buildings except for the, all existing buildings except for the shop and the barn.
A lot type.
Kathleen did that? No?
Um, yes, and then, plus the addition of, uh, revising note, uh, regarding the, uh, home occupation.
And so modify my, uh, my motion.
Got it?
Good job. I'm gonna let everybody write that down, while Jenny's writing it down.
Do we need 8,000 square feet in there as well?
I'm not believing so.
Okay.
4,500 for the new building and the other two are what they are.
Correct. They cannot be expanded, so.
Okay.
Okay, before we vote, this is a little unusual, but I want to make sure we're all okay, because everybody's made a lot of effort here to get it right a second time. Okay?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, um, let's have a roll call, please.
Olfest?
Yes.
Pankins?
Yes.
Bowers Socks?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes. I have a question. If one of us would have voted no, it still would pass, is that correct?
Three and one, yes.
There's only three people out of seven that voted.
Yes, it would have passed.
Still would have passed, because we went through this before and thought it didn't pass.
It's a, so, I'll explain that a little bit later, you guys follow some different rules than the council does.
Oh, okay.
So, yes, it's, at, at your, your form is based off of, like, who's present.
A majority of.
A majority of who is present.
Okay.
Yes.
But council is different.
The council is different, yes. Yep.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you all.
We're gonna move on to, um, number nine, view the sign ordinance.
Commission, I would like to handle this in two different phases tonight. The first discussion we'll have will be related to the amendments we've made per your request at the last meeting regarding the Scooter's uniqueness, um, and them having a little bit more signage than they were allowed to have. Kathleen has done a really nice job, she has amended our sign ordinance, and you can see all of those changes in yellow that would essentially have the Scooter's building being comprised with our side ordinance. So if you look at, um, section 166.19, that's where most of the changes that were made, we have capped the building frontage at 100 square. We have capped the building frontage at 100 square feet for special exceptions. Some of those special exceptions include no more than 1,000 square feet. So the scooters' drive-through was, what, 670 square feet? Did that sound right? Just shy of 700? In cases where a building has a front yard setback of at least 250 feet. So this would allow that lot, too, behind scooters, to have a little bit more signage since they don't have an immediate street frontage right adjacent to their building. In cases where a building has multiple tenants, and in cases where a building is situated on a corner lot with two or more street frontages.
I mean, the only thing I would add is on the multiple tenants, that kind of came, I ran this through Safe Buildings, since they do the sign permitting, just to make sure that what we're saying works for them, which is kind of how we wound up with a little bit of a definitions change in the front regarding the panel sign. But they also discussed the fact that multi-tenant buildings have been a challenge for them because rather than having it on a per-tenant basis, it was for, on a per-building basis. So then they'd have to look to see what everybody else's signs areas were before they could issue a building permit, or I mean, a sign permit. So instead, it essentially allocates it based on the frontage that that tenant has. Similar if it was a standalone building. Just makes it a lot easier for them to administer compared to what they have to do out there at Bridgepoint, for example. And then D is clarification. That's how it's been applied, so it's not really a change, but it's explaining that you can't, if you're on a corner lot, you can't allocate, you kind of get a total signage, and you, and they, the city has in the past allowed folks to move some of their signage from one side of the building to the other, but it caps that at that same 100 square feet, so. And which is historically what the city has done, but this just codifies that. And just, I did do a little bit of research trying to find if there was another building. The closest building that I could find to the 1,000 square feet was the Creamery, and it was like, I want to say 1,009 square feet, something like that. So the Creamery is actually, yeah, 1,009 square feet. So it's slightly over the 1,000, which really was after we came up with that number as being the number, but, and that's the smallest building I could think of that would be kind of right on the edge there. The rest of the buildings around the square are all two, over 2,000 to 3,000, roughly.
The other change was the cabinet sign? Or would that address, like, an interior sign then? Is it channel or lower sign with a raceway mount?
That, that's kind of the structure of the sign. Essentially, what the ordinance and the intent of the ordinance has always been is to eliminate cabinet signs. Your code called them panel signs, but the sign companies call them cabinet signs. But it's really when you've got the metal box with the sign, you know, multiple lighters inside, and then one translucent panel on the front. And it's prohibiting those signs, which have been prohibited in Pope City, other than around the squares since 2003 or before, since I started working with the city. So it's not a little new, but--
Right, Safe Building just asked to add that word because people were not understanding the panel. So cabinet is more prevalent with builders and sign companies.
Yeah, it's more of an industry standard terminology as opposed to panels.
But they mean the same thing.
Yeah.
This wouldn't address the interior signage that I think--
That's the second--
That's the second.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about the second.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Do we need to make a motion upon this?
Well, how about, have we accomplished what you were asking for at the last meeting with the yellow changes in the ordinance?
Yeah, I think I was on my soapbox that night.
Well, I think, I mean, I think it makes sense, so--
And to me, you have. And, yeah, what I was saying was we need to permit our sign ordinance. Same for everybody. And so if we think that an exception has occurred, then that same exception should be available for everyone. And in this case, I think our calculation didn't, as it worked towards infinity of small, the calculation kind of failed. So, yeah, I think this accomplishes.
Okay. Then let's move then to temporary signs, which is 166.21. We have not proposed changes here. So I think that you guys certainly challenged us. I had to ask our city attorney if she knew of any cities that regulated temporary signs. She sent me two different samples. So Des Moines addresses it. Non-illuminated signs displayed inside a window or in a window, including decal or painted signs and neon, and similar signs displayed inside a window are allowed in all zoning districts. Such signs may not exceed 8.5 inches by 11 inches in size per window opening, and it may not cover more than 25% of the window in all districts. So that's Des Moines. We could not find anything else in the Des Moines metro. So she sent me the City of St. Paul's window sign ordinance. So essentially, they do allow temporary signs. They require permits. Here's a nice drawing of what temporary signs might look like in a business district. Their stipulations are that they can only have signs up for 30 days, and that all temporary signs added together may not cover more than 25% of the businesses' windows. Amy said to keep in mind, one of the things that's going to happen if we regulate temporary signs is that, like, when businesses paint on their windows for homecoming, or all of that sort of things, they would fall within the temporary sign ordinance. So if any business wants to do any lettering on their windows, it's going to fall under the temporary sign regulations. So I'm honestly somewhat torn on this because I feel in reading St. Paul's ordinance, regulating signs for 30 days, it's going to cause some work for the staff. I realize that we don't have a ton of businesses that probably have a lot of temporary signs up, but, I mean, we're probably going to have to regulate, you know, grocery stores. We're going to have to regulate businesses on the square. So just think about the impact we are having here on what we're going to put on the city staff. Because it is going to be extra added work. So I have not, we've not added anything to the temporary sign ordinance because I'm not sure what to add.
The, the extra work, it would come in permitting?
Yes, I mean-- Enforcement.
Enforcement.
And enforcement. I mean, if we're going to do something like St. Paul does where it's 30 days, someone will have to monitor that.
I understand that. Does Safe Building do this, or does, do you do this?
I think we would, we would do it. I mean, the city staff addresses nuisance enforcement, so I think that would fall under that responsibility.
So the only two people that really have any authority of the city council is you and Jenny.
And the PD.
And who?
The police department.
And the police department.
The police department does nuisance enforcement, yeah.
Okay, so we're considered a staff, I see.
Yep. And I think your biggest challenge is going to be, if you think about visiting Fairway, three gas stations in town, you've been to the liquor store, I know the pub, and you add all the businesses on the square. So the first thing is going to be education, right? You can't do this anymore. You get 30 days, going through the permitting. Who isn't going to follow those rules? We have to follow up those kinds of things. And then, to your point, if, because we always, they always paint, they do a, they, being the school, does a fundraiser and paints the glass on the square for homecoming to raise funds. I think some of the businesses do it at Christmas for the square lighting, but all of those things would now require a permit application. That has to be reviewed, processed, approved, payments. I mean, it's pretty, I think our temporary sign currently is $25 per sign. So it's not going to be a revenue generator at all.
Now, on page nine, it does talk about temporary signs in commercial industrial zoning districts.
This is intended for outdoors only currently.
And that's just outdoors?
Correct.
Okay, alright. Well, I certainly understand that. I'm kind of a person that's pushing that. That kind of bothered me to do it. Because I, I, it's really hard to enforce stuff, you know? I've been in enough organizations and things where, yeah, working with contractors and stuff. It's easy for me, is I just don't pay them. I don't approve their pay requests. If they do it, they're not going to pay. And I just throw their pay requests in their garbage can. Three months later, they wonder where it's all at, and I say, well, it's out the dump up by Pope City someplace, I don't know. But that's really difficult. Puts you in a difficult position, and I have some-- Do we have other comments, so?
Yeah, it seems like it would make us an outlier in the Des Moines metro, I guess. And I haven't, I guess I haven't really noticed a big difference between Des Moines as ordinance and the suburbs.
Maybe this is something that becomes a bigger topic in the next few years, and we follow it and monitor it.
Yeah, because of the research done, have the information available in case we do need to enforce it at some point. But I would agree, I think it's a big enough issue right now to create an ordinance. Personal.
I agree.
You realize, of course, you probably have one of the best enforcers sitting right next to you. Who scavenged herself this whole city and took down every sign that was in a right-of-way. Jenny, what happened to my for-sale sign? She wouldn't tell me she took it, but when I got out to the maintenance building, they all told on it big time. So we do have somebody that kind of enjoys doing it.
I don't know if "joy" is the right word, but-- I have been given a job to do, and I'm going to be sure to do it to the best of my ability. But I, you know, in turn, I, you notice that when you go to other communities when they have lots of signs in the right-of-way. So I do think it makes the community look cleaner.
Always, yeah.
I do think it, it is, it is a helpful thing, regulating some of that stuff, if you're able to do it.
Yeah. I don't think it's a big deal here anymore. We don't see it. People are pretty good at stuff, so. We're just not big enough to do that. I doubt very much Des Moines goes around and enforces--
That was my thing, you too. And in some areas, it'd be more prevalent than others, too. And I can't imagine a grocery store not having big signs. I mean, that's what they're kind of going for.
They don't have a lot, they don't have a lot of windows there.
No. Yeah, but they all have big, you know, if they have flowers out or whatever.
There's people that actually paint backwards.
Yeah. Well, Mary Miller's daughter does that part, I think.
The backwards.
The one, the one thing that still kind of bothers me a little bit is that you're, you're doing a lot of work to take the square, anyway, and try and bring it up to some type of standards that maybe when you look at that specific area, when you're trying to bring all that up, that possibly, at least for a certain area, that might have some, something to include about that so we don't spend all this money and have this nice-looking square, and then all at once we have signs over. And just because you even have an ordinance about it, you don't really have to do anything about it to enforce it unless somebody complains about it. And I could see if we really had a nice town square, and we've done all this, and all at once we've got signs plastered all over the place, might be a little bit objectionable. So I don't know, maybe, maybe there's a certain thing you can think through when you're doing--
Like, specific to the town square?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Alright, do you have anything else on that?
No, but if you, if you were-- We'll take this to council as is, the highlighted changes.
Okay, do we need a motion?
No, I don't. They'll do the reading, because they have to do it by reading. So they'll have to do three readings.
Oh, okay.
So we just needed to make sure you were on board with it before we took it to them for action.
Okay. Number 10, review open meeting laws.
Pass one down.
Excellent.
Yep. I don't think this is going to take too long, but I just did put together, well, I amended a type-up that I did previously put together. So let's just talk a little bit about what open meeting laws are. So open meeting laws in the state of Iowa are regulated under the Iowa Code, Chapter 21, which we did put a reference for in your packet for you, if you had a chance to review that. I'm just going to go over a very high level of kind of what Chapter 21 says about open meeting laws. So under Iowa open meeting laws, citizens must have the legal right to attend, observe, listen, use cameras, and use recording devices at open sessions of all meetings conducted by a governmental body. The Iowa Code does not say anything about allowing citizens a right to speak. However, all of our agendas do have a public comment section. So I kind of want to fixate on those five things that are listed. Citizens must have the legal right to attend, observe, listen, use cameras, and use recording devices. That's what it has to be allowed at an open session. I won't go into too much detail about this. There are some topics that a governmental body can enter into a closed session for. Some of those things include real estate purchase. Some of those things include pending litigation. Some of, sometimes, city council might go into closed session about hiring and firing of individuals. So there are very specific things usually the city council can go into closed session for, and those are not accessible to the public. However, governmental bodies can talk and discuss items in closed session. However, all final actions on any closed session matter has to be done in open session. So a lot of times, we go into closed session. We can talk about things, but we can't actually make action during closed session. Agendas and minutes. So agendas for all public meetings must be posted 24 hours in advance unless it is considered an emergency. Agendas must be posted at the place of the meeting. So there's no requirement for us to post agendas anywhere other than the place of the meeting, but you all know, we do put all of our agendas and packet documents on our website, and we do that to encourage, to encourage public participation, public participation and transparency. Meeting minutes must be taken at all public meetings. Minutes should include the date, time, and place, the members present, and the action taken at each meeting. All members, all meeting minutes will be public records, open for public inspection. Again, there's no legal requirement that we post our meeting minutes online, but we have seen that there's a lot of public benefit in doing so. When is a meeting an open meeting? So you saw what the requirements were for an open meeting, but the question that I feel like I have, I have received a number of times is, what happens if you have two city council members at a bar or restaurant, and the third one walks in? So let's actually answer that question. So Iowa Open Meetings says a governmental body meets when there is these three things that are met. Any gathering in person or by telephone call or other electronic means, whether formally noticed or informally occurring. So a lot of the time, you know, you could be going back and forth via email. That is not open to the public, so you are in violation of open meeting laws in the state of Iowa. Of a majority of the members of the governing body, any deliberation, discussion, or action on any matter discussed within the scope-- deliberation, discussion, or action on any matter discussed within the scope of the governmental body's policymaking. So, the answer is, um, if you have a, a quorum of a governmental body, they may gather socially informally if the conversation is social, business is not discussed. So, technically, if you have two city council members somewhere and the third walks in, um, they are not all required to leave, but a lot of it is about public perception and what the public thinks. So, more than likely, it's probably the right thing to not congregate together. Okay, so I kind of gave you guys an overview of what, um, it says in Chapter 21. What questions do you have regarding open meeting rules?
Well, I think the, the easiest part is this meeting, and that is, uh, we don't have to worry about it, you guys do.
Yeah.
And that, that's the, that's the easy part. Uh, an additional item I thought that was acceptable was education as well. So, that we, I mean, we could have four of us being ed, this came up when we went to an Iowa State PMZ seminar.
Okay.
We had four of us going together, and we actually asked, you know, our, can all four of us go at the same time? And the answer was yes, because if we were, it was an educational forum.
Okay.
Uh, at, at least that was the response at that point in time. I'm not sure if that's changed. Uh, for me, I guess, the biggest risk I think, uh, that I worry about from my own exposure is, uh, email, is, uh, I try to not send emails to the group, uh, even though it might be, uh, you know, just educating a point. I am more fearful of, do we get into a conversation via email that's prompted by my initial email? You know, that's, that's what I am fearful of, is that I, you know, I, I think what brought this up was when I noticed the cemetery was up there that we didn't have in our, uh, land use plan. And I was, you know, I had the email all set up to tell everybody that we have this cemetery up there, we should modify or amp land use plan. And then I thought, before I hit send, I thought about what people are, how they're gonna respond back to me, uh, saying, you know, gee, that, here on, you know, that makes sense, and, you know, can we do that before it goes to council and this and that? And those are the types of exchanges I think we need to worry about.
Yes.
And, uh, and I'm assuming all of your, uh, well, I, I don't know about yours, but I'm assuming your emails are discoverable, uh, and public.
Yep, as are yours.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. You, you would be subject to moving records as well.
And so, and so those exchanges are, are discoverable. So, that was something I, I would worry about at that point in time. Uh, and if we do have any more exposure, it'd be like, you know, would four of us attend a, uh, a Chamber of Commerce meeting? And would that meeting get into, you know, a potential business moving to town, and what steps in rezoning might, we need to do to make that happen? You know, that might be another case where we might not want a forum there.
I think, I think you're smart to think of those things. I will tell you, um, most cities get in trouble electronically, and it's the common responding to all of the members of a governing body. And, you know, I, I've done enough over the years where I've learned where to try to navigate around that. But my, my opinion is, if, if you guys are trying to communicate, your best bet is to communicate with the staff directly. So, you did the right thing where you saw something with the future land use plan, and you notified us that, hey, we needed to incorporate the cemetery. So, we did that. That's honestly the right thing to do versus you communicating it with the group. If you were to want to communicate it with the group, I would recommend you just do it at an open meeting, because then we can't get in trouble. We, we've posted, the meeting is open to the public, and it meets those five requirements. So, it, it, it wouldn't be a big deal or a problem.
But he could communicate to at least one other member.
Yes, yes, he could. Um, yeah, actually, you could communicate to two. It's a quorum, yes.
So, he could have copied me and Doug.
Yes.
And I copied just, I'm not telling, I, but I copied just, I did copy just the chair.
Yeah, it was just me copying, so.
What I've seen happen with that, though, and not, it didn't happen in this particular time, but what I've seen happen is then you copy in somebody else to get their opinion, and now you're past the number.
Yeah.
So, um, city attorney, long time ago, when I was first learning the ropes, encouraged me that any time that I am communicating with commission members or the council, to do so in a blind copy way, so they can't accidentally reply all. Now, the only time that I can't control that is the meeting invites, because it goes to the calendar, so you're all on it. But if you'll notice, when I send emails, you can't see who's on the email for a reason, because you can't reply all to a blind copy. It'll only send it to, back to me, or if I had Chelsea copied in, or if I had Kathleen, just the people that aren't blind copied get replied. So, you can't, I'm trying to make it to where you can't make a mistake, right? I'm asking a question, I don't want you to reply all, I want you just to reply to me. I'm gonna make it to where can't reply to all, basically.
Okay, like, that didn't happen. And you sent me a nice note, and, and I-
But that was because it was a calendar invite. That's where I don't-
Okay, I got a calendar invite, and down at the bottom, I got this night, these three notes, like, you know, get out of here, I don't want to come. I'd be glad to come, or I will be there. So, all I did was click on that to tell you I would be here.
Yeah.
And then I got a nice note from you that I violated the open meeting law.
I thought, well, then, what a perfect time to tell you before we, so what I would do on that is use, so there is an actual accept button on the calendar invites, usually top left. If you click on that, it'll send me that you, you accepted it, but, and, and it will put it on your calendar, and we all know at that point.
Okay, so there's an accept button, not to do, not, don't do one of the comments. Okay. That I did not know.
Yeah.
And we're supposed to do that?
You don't have to.
Oh, okay.
It just tells me that you got my email, and I know you're coming, but you are all very good about telling me when you're not coming. So, I assume you're all going to be here if I don't hear from you.
Now, people also tell me as chairperson, if they're not gonna attend.
And that's fine.
Yeah.
I think that's courteous.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
It's courteous so you know.
Yeah, and I think that's really a nice thing, so we know.
The main thing is-
I got here today, and it was only two of us.
Yes. That's why it's important you let me and, and/or the chair know, because then I can make sure we have a Zoom setup or work it out to where we have a quorum, so we don't have to reschedule a meeting.
So, when you send something out to everybody, that doesn't violate the meeting law?
No, because she's not a member of a governing body. She's a staff member.
Alright.
Now, um, we're still held accountable, so there are penalties if you violate the open meeting laws. So, let's say that, I'll just use the city council, we'll pick on them tonight. Um, let's say they want to communicate via email back and forth, and they CC me in it. I, I get brought into that. So, a person, if you're found, um, if you're found to be in violation of open meeting laws, the penalty's up to $500 per person. So, if it, if it gets really serious and someone were to want to report us, and, you know, they looked into it further, um, we could all be fined up to $500.
Um, do we have any liability insurance through the city, or are we covered?
Yes, we do.
What are we covered for?
I don't know. Uh, uh, we have, you know, certi bonds for the, the council and all the boards and commissions. I don't know what the dollar amount is.
Alright, so we're covered similar to-
I do not believe that an open meeting violation can be paid through insurance. I, actually, I think that that is an individual penalty you have to pay.
But if somebody sues us, uh, for voting no for some reason, and say it did them some financial harm, are we covered for that? We have representation?
Yeah. Now, I can't say that we're going to be completely covered, but yeah, we do have insurance, yep.
Yes, and I think our first, our first defense is we're a recommending party. We don't, we don't make any decisions.
You are not the final decision-making, yep.
That's my first attempt.
A lawyer would just look at you like I did. Like, oh, I love it, did you, or? Well, thank you for explaining. Anything, anything else?
Nope, you guys can keep this. Um, yeah. I did put the entire chapter in your packets.
You got it. Okay. Reports in particulars? Council, anything? Liaison, no liaison? Why don't we don't have a liaison?
Um, I don't, I have not heard from, from our liaison. I don't know if he just was not able to make tonight. He is invited.
He's been here for at least three times, has he?
I will follow up, though.
Yeah, I mean, it's fine, and he can always go on, but sometimes we might have some, sometimes comments that he makes and tells us back. It's kind of nice to, you can do that also, I guess. Yep. Okay. Um, city manager, staff, anybody?
I don't have anything.
You know, I've been here for, I don't know, 16, 17 years up here. I don't know what, it's as close to that. And, uh, the staff keeps getting better with your responses and things, thoroughness that you threw through stuff. And that's, you know, everybody that, that's involved. Don't have to name names and everything. And the other thing is that we also want to thank everybody that takes their time, effort, and, uh, their input up here. And, um, I know that we all rely on each other, and it's kind of nice that everybody helps each other. So, just a big thank you to everybody, and it's all really appreciated. You know, you're taking time away from whatever, and, you know, some of us get paid, some of us don't, but that's, that's just, so. Uh, just a big thank you all the time. I think that's really important. We recognize you. Um, 12, adjourned until September 19th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Alright.
Aye. Oppose? Did we ever get anybody to join us?
We did, no, I didn't.